Okay, we'll call the Shakopee City Council meeting for May 7th, 2024 to order. We'll ask that the Secretary take the role, please.
Councilmember Delaney?
Here.
Councilmember Whiting?
Here.
Councilmember Lara?
Here.
Mayor Lehman?
Here.
Item number two, if you'll join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item number three, approval of the agenda. Is there any changes to the agenda from council or staff?
Nothing from staff, sir.
From council? Mr. Lara?
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Lara, second by Mr. Delaney. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. Item number four, consent agenda. Any changes from staff of the consent agenda?
Nothing from staff, sir.
Mr. Whiting?
I'll pull off 4E1. Is that the one you were gonna pull to?
Yeah.
Okay, I'll let you pull it.
I was gonna do the same.
I'm sorry, which one? Was that?
4E1. From council? Wishes of council? Mr. Lara?
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda as modified.
Is there a second?
No.
Seconded by Mr. Whiting. Any discussion on the motion? Mr. Reynolds, you wanna read the consent agenda, please?
Yes, sir. These are the consent agenda items for May 7th of 2024. 4A1 are city council minutes. 4A2 approves the temporary liquor licenses for the Shakopee Lions Club. 4A3 approves a temporary liquor license for the Shakopee Area Chamber and Visitors Bureau. 4A4 grants a tobacco license for pawn exchange. 4A5 declares monetary limits on tort liability for the League of Minnesota City's Insurance Trust. 4A6 is a Minnesota DNR's Conservation Partners Legacy Program grant award. 4A7 is the appointment of a new fire chief. 4A8 is the addition of two firefighter positions. 4A9 is the Minnesota Board of Water and Soil Resources Clean Water Fund Watershed Based Implementation Funding Program application. We need to get that retitled, I think.
Your acronym.
4B1 is agreement with Shakopee Public Utilities for construction inspection of public improvements and amendment to ordinance modifying the fee schedule. 4B2 is award of contract and approve of change order one for Second Avenue and Lewis Street parking lot improvement project. 4B3 approves the intersection traffic control change at the Hartley Boulevard and Windsor Drive South Windsor Lane intersection. 4B4 approves a parking restriction along portions of Shenandoah Drive. 4B5 approves a grant application to the U.S. Department of Transportation for Safe Streets and Roads for All grant program. 4B6 is an agreement with Goodpoint Technology for Pavement Condition Assessment Services. 4B7 approves a wetland replacement plan for Excel Energy's Blue Lake Generating Plant. 4B8 approves a wetland replacement plan for Arbor Bluff. 4C1 is a resolution setting a public hearing for a proposed vacation of a drainage and utility easement at 1465 Maris Street. 4C2 awards a contract for the scenic heights pickleball courts construction. 4D1 is surplus property and 4E2 is the 2024 sanitary sewer and storm sewer televising contract.
Thank you, Mr. Reynolds. Any questions? We do have a motion and a second. Seeing no other comment, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. Item number five, recognition of citizens of Shakopee that wish to speak to city council on an item that is not on our agenda. So if you're here to speak to the city council on something that is not on our agenda, now would be the time to do so. Please feel free to step right up to the mic here.
Mr. Mayor, we have some youth in the crowd tonight. Are you here for a class assignment?
Yeah.
This would be the time if you wanted to bring your issue forward and talk to us about a thing. This is where you'd come and tell us your name.
Or you can, or one of you can come up and tell us what your assignment is and who you're with and...
Or all of you. Credit. State your name and your address for the record, please.
...service member or something, so we are all here for this meeting.
Excellent. Welcome and thanks for coming down and...
Yep, thank you.
Hopefully you can enjoy the council meeting tonight.
Staff members can take your interview, I'm sure, right?
And we'll make sure that we get Mr. Whiting to your teachers to make sure you get a good grade.
I'll sign something.
Very good. Welcome and thanks for coming down. Anybody else in the audience would like to address the council on an issue not on the agenda? Seeing none. Item number six, business removed from consent will be discussed at this time. Councilor Whiting took 4E1 off the agenda. Mr. Whiting?
As a Shakopee Lion member, it's a little self-serving, so I'll hand it to Mr. Lara since he wanted to take it as well.
Yeah, I just wanted to recognize the Shakopee Lions Club for their $3,500 donation that will be used towards repairs of the splash pad, the lion and the frog. So we appreciate their generosity in helping the support of the park. So with that, I'd like to make a motion to adopt or accept Resolution R2024-064 donation from Lions Club.
I will second it.
All right, we have a motion, a second, any discussion? And for your class purposes, this type of motion requires a two-thirds majority. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes.
New frog, all right.
Item number seven, this time we'll recess for the Economic Development Authority meeting. Is there a motion to recess to the Economic Development Authority? Mr. Delaney?
I'll make a motion to recess for the Economic Development Authority meeting.
Pull your mic over, please.
I'll make a motion to recess for the Economic Development Authority meeting.
Thank you. Is there a second?
I'll second.
On the motion, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. We're recessed.
All right, let's convene the May 7th, 2024 meeting of the Shakopee Economic Development Authority. Staff, please make note of the rule. Item number two is approval of the agenda.
President, I'll make a motion to approve the agenda.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Any comment? All right, a motion and second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, we have a, we have an agenda. Item number three is the consent business, and on the consent business is the EDA minutes from last month.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
We have a motion by Lara, second by Delaney. Any comments on the minutes?
None.
Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, we have consent business passed. General business for tonight is a lease for the River City Center for three-year underground Brazilian Jiu-Jitsu Academy. Mr. Kurski?
Mr. President, board members, this is just a three-year renewal of their lease at slightly reduced rate to bring it more in line with all the rest of the leases at River City Center.
So common language is all the other leases we've been seeing in the past few months?
This is identical.
Identical. Any questions or comments? What are the wishes?
I'd like a motion to approve the three-year lease with Underground Brazilian Jiu-Jitsu LLC.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. All right, item five is our reports, our EDA bill. Is there any question on the bill list?
I had no questions.
Seeing none. Then we're on to item six. Member Lehman?
Mr. President, sorry. I'll make a motion to adjourn to Tuesday, June 4th, 7:00 PM.
Second.
Second to adjourn. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We stand adjourned.
All right, bring the Shakopee City Council meeting back to order. We are on item 9A1, city's long-term financial plan. And Mr. Finance Director, Mr. Reinhardt, I'll present. Go ahead when you're ready, sir.
Good evening, Mayor, council members. Tonight, we have our discussion on our long-term financial plan. This is the fourth year that we've put together a long-term financial plan. Just to give a little background, same slide I've used in the past, but this was developed based on our strategic priority of financial stability. Ask for us to develop a long-term financial plan. Unlike the annual audit report and to some extent the budget book, there's no template that exists for a long-term financial plan, so it's really how we wanna put those, put that long-term financial plan together, so there's some flexibility on what we put in the plan and how we use it. In my opinion, our plan does a good job providing data that takes us from the past to the present, gives us an idea where we're going without getting too bogged down on any lengthy narrative or details. One...
Little muscle over here. Thank you, sir. I don't wanna break it. It's just one more thing we have to pay for. Sorry, sir. Go ahead.
I didn't say we don't wanna pay for anyone, so this is perfect timing, right? So one of the items that came up with our debt rating report when we issued bonds in 2020 was we did not have a long-term financial plan, so we did get kind of a mark on that. They did review it with our 2022 bond when we issued bonds, and they viewed it as strong, which is an uptick from their previous view. Directly quoting from the ratings from that report, "Our change in assessment stems from the recent implementation and council review of a robust long-term plan that uses several years of trend analysis and projects 10 years with different levels of inflationary revenue and costs assumed." So I guess you can say we have, we have checked that box at least for the credit reporting criteria. And then I do have a flow chart on the bottom of this slide that illustrates how I view how the long-term financial plan fits in. It starts by establishing overlying city goals, priorities and policies. From there, we develop our long-term financial plan prior to developing the annual budget, and then that's followed by monitoring the financial performance throughout the year. So I see tonight as the first step in the budget process to really look at the overall long-term financial direction of the city before we determine our annual needs. The benefit of going through an exercise like this is it really allows us to look at a long-term perspective versus a short-term perspective when making decisions. And then the long-term financial plan, as you recall, it's made up of really two different sections. One would be the trend analysis and the other would be the 10-year general fund projections. And then, just as the last three years, we'll incorporate the long-term financial plan within the capital improvement plan as a, as an appendix. And there's no formal action that city council has to do. This is, where there's no obligation at all, doesn't require the city to take any action in any manner. So I saw another, this is new, I saw another city that had a similar infographic, so kind of a big thing, Cedepebno and the Communications Department for assisting in creating our own, which is kind of a much cleaner and enhanced version of what I saw out there and more reflective of Shakopee. So the model here illustrates the high-quality city services as the foundation, the healthy, of a healthy and growing community, and shows where external forces and government action might intervene. Those high-quality services drive population growth as more businesses and people want to be part of our community. Population growth drives growth in real estate values, whether that be new development or the rise in demand for existing inventory. That growth in real estate values ensure rising tax revenue, which pays for the inflation-based cost increases of those high-quality city services with minimal impact on the property tax rate. This cycle is the foundation of the annual budget development and helps identify and explain influencing factors. Certainly many different ways you could look at this model. For example, during our budget process, we look at service levels and we often focus on cost. However, if we choose not to implement an initiative solely based on cost, how does that impact the desire of people or businesses to locate here? We all have the ability to pick and choose where we live, and if Shakopee doesn't have the strong infrastructure, safe neighborhoods, amenities, they may choose to live somewhere else, which impacts the values and our revenues. Interesting to think that, you know, by choosing to avoid a cost initially, it could ultimately have more impacts in the long run. And then our role in the cycle as city government is ensuring that we provide high-quality city services, influencing the mix of property types between industrial, residential and commercial, and then determining the appropriate mix of how services are paid for, whether it's taxes, grants, user fees. So getting into the trend analysis, so the first few charts I have split out by property type, but they're in two different charts. I have residential in total on the following chart just because the numbers are so, there's so many more residential in total types that you can't really see it on the chart. So the second chart will show the residential in totals. This first chart shows ag, apartment, commercial, exempt and industrial by property types, so a number of parcels. The chart shows that property types by parcel since 2015. Interesting to see, commercial has relatively been flat over that period, where conversely, the number of apartment, industrial parcels have grown. You'll notice that ag parcels kind of jump around. What'll happen there is they'll have a larger ag parcel that'll end up being split and then turn into residential, so that would explain kind of those ups and downs. So same slide here, only this is residential and total parcels. Residential parcels have increased by 1,421. Total parcels have increased by 1,496 to a total of over 15,356 for the payable 2024 year, which again makes sense based on those ag parcels being converted into multi, multiple residential lots.
The residential parcels, you have it broke down between residential and total citywide. What's the difference between?
So the total citywide would include all these from the previous slide. So it would include the ag, apartment, commercial, exempt, industrial and residential, so it's total parcel citywide. And residential would just be residential.
Can you go back one slide? On the commercial, in 2015, we had 363 acres, I assume, and it drops quite a bit. Is that, we're not demolishing commercial property. Is that like going into different type of property, like a church or something, or how is that?
Yeah, I would, I would have to look back to see what the, the change is, but that certainly could be the case where it could go, you know, from commercial to industrial, residential, or it could even be, you know, a lot being joined into a bigger commercial.
Or a commercial going into an apartment building.
Correct, that could be.
Oh, it's zoning. It's not, it's by acreage, yeah, okay.
Old City Hall, that was institutional and went to partial commercial, partial apartment.
Yeah, apartment, yeah.
Mr. Delaney?
What's considered to be exempt property? What example of that?
Yeah, so that would be anything tax exempt, so anything the city might own. So I'm guessing one of the big factors there would be park land. As we've added more parks, we've probably added more parcels there is my guess, but it could be, you know, churches.
Churches, schools.
County schools.
Courthaus, maybe.
Yeah, nonprofits.
Government buildings.
Thank you.
And then, sorry, I'm out. Give me just a second here. There we go. So in the packet, I also have charts on taxable market value, but here I just chose net adjusted tax capacity, which is, really gets at the same thing, and that's the value that's applicable to the property tax levy. So we've seen significant growth in tax capacity over the past 10 years, apartment going from 1.6 million to 6.3, commercial from 5.2 to 8.7, industrial from 5.8 to 21.2. Percentage-wise, that's a 293% increase for apartments, 62% for commercial and 265% for industrial. And then, again, the same slide, total being all those that we've seen on the previous slide plus residential. For residential, we've seen an increase of 24.7 million to 47.4, and then in total from 38.5 million to 84.6. In total, this is 120% increase of 46.1 million in citywide tax capacity. And then I think this chart really illustrates why residential saw a decrease in the property taxes last year. You can see the flat line from 2023 to 2024 for residential, but a significant increase in city tax capacity in total. Many of that other property types picked up the share last year, and that kind of explains how those, how that shift happened. This chart shows Shakopee's fiscal disparities, net contribution in terms of tax capacity. So this is the net amount of what the city contributes and what the city receives in the distribution. The city is the ninth largest contributor to the program. I did look at the data last week, and I can confirm that there still is only one city in Scott County who's a net contributor, and that's us. So Belle Plaine, Credit River, Jordan, Prior Lake and Savage are all recipients of fiscal disparity dollars. With a growing industrial tax base, it's gone from 2.1 million of tax capacity in 2015 to 6.6 million in 2024. And then to put that in context of total tax capacity is about 6.5% that we're contributing. Another thing that's kind of interesting, if you remember a couple slides ago, I showed apartment here, 6.2 million in tax capacity. Well, what we're contributing is more than we have in apartment tax capacity in total. So it's a, it's a big number when you, when you think of it that way. Then this slide shows the net tax we captured by TIF districts in the past 10 years. 10 years ago was about 581,000. In 2024, it's about 2.9 million. This slide really shows that we've been successful in increasing tax capacity through the tax increment districts. Keep in mind, these developments would not have occurred but for the use of TIF. We've generated about 2.9 million of additional tax capacity. That in time will be added to the city's tax capacity. The year is listed as the year the district was decertified or required decertification date. For example, Amazon, which is kind of the, I wouldn't say a red color, red brown color, that was decertified at the end of 2023, so there's really nothing to show in 2024. And then last year, Sandmar, River City Center, Amazon, those were the three districts that we all decertified, which was about 2.3 million in tax capacity.
So is the TIF district captured net tax capacity shown in the, accounted for in the total adjusted tax capacity under commercial, other, industrial, apartment?
So that'll be, these will be net of those dollars. So it won't be, these will be after those amounts have been pulled out.
It's added once the, once the TIF district is, is closed.
Oh, you're saying the ones that were closed? Is that your question?
No, the ones that are currently open, is that, is that tax capacity included in the total net tax capacity of the city?
I'm, I could, I should double check, but I'm 95% sure. There are numbers after the amounts have been pulled out for, for these. So it's
Okay.
Tax capacity after these two adjustments, which is fiscal disparities and tax increment.
Well, what I'm getting at is if you take the total valuation of the city, all classes combined, right, which includes the value of TIF districts, then you take the levy and you put it into the total value of the city, come up with a tax rate. So is the value of a TIF district included in that calculation or is it removed from that calculation?
No, it would be removed from that calculation.
Okay. Carry on.
As would fiscal disparities.
As would, yeah.
I'd be curious to know exactly where all the fiscal disparities go.
Not here. What, what number, okay, I wasn't gonna say anything about fiscal disparities, but I am going to say something about fiscal disparities. This, this is a, to educate our youth, this only exists in the state of Minnesota. It does not exist anywhere else in the United States. And essentially what it does, it takes, based upon an arcane formula that was developed over 35 years ago, it takes money that we have from our taxpaying residents and gives it to other communities. And we're seventh highest paying in the state?
Ninth.
Ninth.
It's based on our commercial and industrial.
It's based upon commercial and industrial growth.
We have a good tax.
Well, timeout, timeout. Let's make sure we get this easy and clear to understand so that we can put the accountability where it belongs, okay? So you have other cities within Minnesota who elect councils, and them bodies make decisions to not do things, to not have a commercial and industrial base in their communities.
Prior Lake. I was just gonna say.
And because they made that decision, which, you know, maybe they don't want that in their community or whatever, but because of them decisions that they have made and because of the decisions we have made to be diversified with commercial, industrial and a rounded out, we get penalized and get to pay them money because they made the wrong decision. Just kind of wanna make that clear.
Prior Lake gets like a $2 million check.
So if Prior Lake gets, you know, those poor people in Prior Lake who can't afford anything get $2 million, I'm gonna get in trouble.
This is educational.
My good friends in Prior Lake have their, have their taxes supplemented by hard-working cities like us who, who pay money into the system.
Round out their tax base.
You can direct all comments to Chelsea Peterson before them to me when she has reviewed them.
I'm so, moving on. So, so this chart shows the makeup of our levy over the past 10 years. Levy was 17.25 million in 2015, increasing to 25.9 this year. So when I say this year, it's 2024, I know sometimes that you're, you know, we're talking about, sometimes we're talking about last year, sometimes we're talking about 2023, but we're talking about the 2024 year and the payable 2024 year. So as you can see by the graded, the gray shaded portion of these factors since 2015, one of those factors, I should say, was the community center and ice arena debt issue, which is the gray portion there. And this slide has kind of a number of different things on here, but I really like this slide because it's all in one place. So it shows the changes in city levy by dollar amount and percentage, and then the corresponding impact on the city tax rate. Over the past 10 years, on average, we've seen about an 870,000 or a 4.6% increase in property taxes. However, we've seen a, I should say, in the property tax levy. However, we've seen a tax rate drop significantly from 2015 when it was at 37.9%, now it's down to 27.4% for the current year. And then population data, so from the 2020 census and then the rest is coming from Matt Council and State Demographer estimates. But since 2015, we've gone from 39,523 to an estimate of 48,224, so about 8,700 or 2022, 22% over the past decade. And then just a side note on this one, so 50,000 is the threshold for when the federal census considers us an urbanized area is kind of their definition, which potentially could open up, us up to some additional grant opportunities. You know, one example from a few years ago when we got our COVID funds, our, the amount we got was much, much less than if we had probably millions of dollars less if we'd had three more thousand worth of population. So that 50,000 is a threshold for a lot of different things.
Can you back up to the levy component in millions? One more, one more. And for our students in the audience, if you look at the 2024 number, I'll round it to 26 million, and then you take the fiscal disparities that we give to everybody else of 6.5 million, 6 million goes into 26 million how many times? Almost a fourth, right? Just wanted to put that into perspective of just how much we're forced to give away. Please hold your thoughts, Sir Mr. Rouse.
So one, so the, the number on that fiscal disparity would be tax capacity. So when I mentioned that, that 6.7%, that's really the 6.7% as a, rather, as opposed to dividing it with the levy, if that makes sense.
Yeah.
So it's, but, it's still a big number.
It's still $6 million.
Yes, yes. So last slide here, at least on the trend stuff, full-time employees by functional area. So we've, over the past decade, public safety, which would be police, fire, and then building inspections, and park and recreation, which would include parks, community center and ice arena. So those are the areas that we've added employees over the past 10 years. And these are, this is based on the 2024 budget, so any staffing changes we've had this year, positions we've added, they're not reflective in, in these numbers, but they will be, you know, next year when they turn into actuals. And then I've got a few kind of bonus slides that weren't included in the, in the long-term financial plan document, but I thought would be helpful information as we kind of went through this process. So this is preliminary information for taxes payable next year, so we just got these numbers. So we just got these numbers, actually just a few weeks ago. So, and the numbers as, as of April first, so they'll change throughout the year. But our taxable market value is increasing by five hundred and seventy million or seven point four percent. And about forty-four percent of that is coming from new construction, which is pretty significant. Total taxable market value of residential is increasing by five percent, apartment nine point one, commercial nine point five and industrial twelve point eight. And at this point, we don't have values for fiscal disparities for payable twenty twenty-five. So that'll impact these numbers. But generally speaking, it appears residential impacts will probably be minimal based on the assessment value changes. Not quite the same shift we've seen last year, but there would be a slight shift from residential to some of these other property types and new construction.
Can we get, get this slide to council?
Yeah, it was in the packet. So you've got the presentation I made sure I included, but anything you don't have?
This one, right, this slide here is in there?
You should have the whole, you should have everything. Yep. You should double check that before.
Page one twenty-eight of one seventy-two.
Very good.
Good, good. Sorry, I didn't lie. Then also for comparison, the county scene, so we're seeing a seven point four percent. Countywide, it's a four point eight five percent in taxable market value, Prior Lake, three point nine five, Savage, three point two four. So not surprisingly, the city of Shakopee is really driving the growth in, in Scott County. And then if you recall, last year, the state changed the, the market value exclusion law. So it went from four hundred and seventeen thousand to a home valued at five hundred and seventeen thousand, up to five hundred and seventeen thousand would now qualify for that exclusion, twenty twenty-five being the first year. So, and that's based on a sliding scale. So those homes that were, that are valued at four hundred and seventeen and under will see a bigger exclusion this year. And then in addition to all these homes that are in that four hundred and seventeen to five hundred and seventeen thousand dollar range, I looked at kind of just a, ran kind of a calculation. It's about a one point one percent impact, meaning that about a fifty-six million dollar reduction in taxable residential market value, just based on excluding that additional value from, from property taxes. So what this ultimately means is if your home is valued at five hundred and seventeen thousand or under, you're, you're likely going to see, well, you're more likely going to see a, like a property tax decrease. And if your home is valued at five hundred and seventeen thousand, you're likely to see a property tax increase because it's shifting those dollars away from those, those valued homes. For those who are that, who are around when we did the, initially adopt the market value exclusion, which I think was like twenty eleven, twenty twelve, it's kind of that same scenario that I remember having big long conversations about that then.
It used to be a market value homestead credit.
Yep. Yep. So it's not giving you, it's not a, well, the problem is it's not a credit. If it was a credit, it would be paid for. It's an exclusion. It's basically saying, if your home is valued in that range, we're going to say, take a piece of that taxable market value and not charge taxes on it, is ultimately what it's doing on a sliding scale. The median value home, so that's seen an increase of twelve thousand three hundred to three hundred and fifty thousand seven hundred. So that would be the median value home for, for next year. And to kind of talk about that, that market value exclusion, so you're seeing the value go up twelve thousand three hundred, the taxable piece is only going up four thousand one hundred. So that's where that exclusion is, is coming in on, on some of those. And then I just kind of ran numbers based on our current year levy. So if we held the levy flat, what would the median value home do for next year? And this is again, without fiscal disparity information and preliminary estimates, but it's about an eight percent decrease or a seventy-three dollar decrease in property taxes if we had, if we just held the levy flat for next year. So there's room to, I guess, you know, if we have additional expenditures that we add, there's, there's room to add to the levy without necessarily impacting somebody's, seeing somebody's property taxes go up. Sorry, it's a bunch of numbers there, but, and then I just have a couple of really quick slides. So these are from the audit presentation from last year. The auditors will be out here first week of June and we'll have updated slides that they'll be able to show you. But here's debt, because I know I've got questions on debt in the past. Just for comparison purposes, it's looking at class two cities, which we fall into of twenty thousand to one hundred thousand. We compare favorably in both the debt, debt per capita and then debt service expenditures as a percent of our total expenditures. And then I just took the tax graphs too. And then again, you know, we're looking favorably both for tax rates and taxes per capita with comparison of those class two cities and cities in Scott County. And this, this slide, just recycling it from our budget, our last budget presentation in December, just showing, we continue to be one of the lowest tax communities in metro area. So there are, this is actually using two, twenty twenty-two property tax data that was available through the league. But there were thirty-two cities with population between twenty-five and a hundred thousand in the metro area and, and the red dot being where we stack up in that. This slide I have updated. So this is your twenty twenty-four annual cost of services. Showing the slide plenty of times in the past, but I have changed it from two hundred and fifty thousand dollar home to a three hundred thousand dollar home, just because I think it's a little bit more reflective of what we're seeing in our community. So this would be a three hundred thousand dollar home using five thousand gallons of water. We're responsible for obviously property taxes and then the sewer and storm utility portion. So running a comparison with what we call our comparable cities and our surrounding cities, you can see that we're at the very bottom. And we've actually, when I looked at the data, we're actually, out of the, all the cities listed here, only us and Coon Rapids had a property tax decrease or a tax rate decrease. So kind of that gap between us and the other cities actually have, have expanded. And, and this number is actually lower than what it would have been in twenty twenty-three. So it's always good to have some positive information here.
And the blue portion on the sewer charge, the largest portion of that blue piece is a pass-through for the treatment from Met Council, correct?
It is, yeah. And I can tell you, we got preliminary data on that and that number's going up about twenty percent. So I, so, so we'll see what they ultimately come, come back with, but it was a pretty substantial increase for next year.
It, it would be a coincidence if their permit to operate in Shakopee went up twenty percent.
I, and because, because I put all this background data together too, I can, I can tell you, I guess anecdotally, when I was looking at some of the other cities, when I was looking at what they had for increases and I, and I had looked at sewer, water and storm, they, a lot of them had some pretty significant increases in those utilities where we had just pretty small increases last year. So I was kind of surprised to see some of those significant increases with some of these cities that are listed here. But. So moving on to the general fund projections. So just starting with some reference points. So this is comparing twenty twenty-two actuals with twenty fourteen actuals. So just actual data from one year to ten years ago, right? So over, on average, over the previous ten years, we've seen about a ten point six percent growth in our tax capacity. Our total levy, which would include operations, debt service, EDA and capital projects, is about a four point six percent annually increase. The general fund portion only was about two point seven percent. And then on the expense side, we're about five point four for general government, five point one for public safety, six, six percent for public works and eight point five for park and rec. The biggest factors to the, on the expenditure side were on the staffing side. So whether it's adding new staffing or just, I guess, annual increases. So then just kind of, here's the assumptions that I use when I put together the ten-year projections. Just kind of, well, I used the base data for the twenty twenty-four budget and then projected the, the next ten years. We, just broken down by those functional areas, we set a two point seven five percent increase for general government, public works and parks. Where public safety, we've done about three point two five, mainly because it's made up of mostly personnel. And then on the revenue side, we plugged in three percent for license and permits, three percent annually increases for license and permits, intergovernmental charges for services, and then just kind of figured out what it would take in order to be able to maintain our fund balance policy. And that would require about a three point seven, or a three point seven five percent property tax levy to make those numbers work out. So I just kind of backed into that, that property tax levy. This one's probably hard to read, probably easier to read in your packet, but those are the, the ten-year projections. And then I added some additional data and kind of impacts on the bottom as far as what would happen to that median value home based on those assumptions, what would happen per capita and where the fund balance would be within that target range of, you know, in comparison of the target range, which is fifty percent of our following year's budget. So an average value home increasing at four percent, we'll see their property taxes grow at about four percent per year. And then there, that tax rate actually continues to decrease based on those assumptions if I used a, if we assume about a five percent growth in taxable market value. So a lot of numbers in here, but the, kind of the, the rule of thumb is just to give you a general idea of what you might expect on a annual basis. And if you're looking at this and thinking, well, expenditures were seen way too low or too high, then you can kind of infer what it would impact, you know, some of those other numbers. So just kind of a, a general feeling of the impacts. That is about all I have. Kind of a lot of fun charts to go through and numbers. Always my favorite presentation of the year. But I can stand with any, stand for any questions that you might have.
Questions, staff?
This does officially kick off your favorite time of year.
Yeah, yeah. I, I told Bill he can see the skip in my step this week because we're budget season.
Good time, yeah.
And wait to get you that old abacus. So questions that I have. So I, I know the underlying assumptions here are just pretty base. And, you know, if we really look at the reality of the, the country where we're at right now, it's really a hard time to plan any kind of long-term financially. I mean, if you really think about it, you've got record spending happening at the federal level, deficits are high, and they, they raised inflation to slow it down, which caused their payments on their debt to double. And that doesn't look like it's going to get solved anytime soon. Consumer credit card debt is a record high. You get all these variables out there that obviously this body can't control, but all play a factor on us, whether it's interest rates or inflation. And then you've got the state raising all kinds of taxes and raising the cost of living in locals, in the state anyway. So there's a lot, there's a lot of legislation that we know that could be coming forward from the state that would play, play an impact in this also. So, you know, it's nice to look at this as just a baseline, but the reality is there's a lot of things that can get thrown into this cookie dough before it goes to the oven that's going to change the outcome of whether that cookie tastes good or not. Fair analysis?
Yeah, I would say so. I mean, but you could always look back. You obviously have seen the, went through those trend charts, you know, the idea that those trends would continue barring some sort of change in, in what we're doing or, or large changes or whatever it might be. And also, you know, in, in order, I mean, if you're really looking out and trying to get, predict every single thing that's going to happen in the next ten years and try to, you could spend a lot of time in this. So, and I, I don't think that's what, the way I would look at it, I would almost look at it as, okay, well, what's reasonable? And then in a given year, if something were to go, you know, if, if revenues were to be up, then you have, you know, how would it impact the, the relationship with everything else within the general fund? That's kind of how I look at it, but.
So is inflation coming down because they're going to balance the budget in Washington in the next five years?
I do not have an answer to that.
Probably not. Probably not.
What we can fix here.
What we do every year is we update this report.
Right.
So, you know, we take the latest year's data and plug that in. And as we get more and more data plugged in over the years and we be, and we're able to look back and see the difference between the two, it gives us a little more chance of dialing things in a bit. You know, it's, it's, it's not a predictive, you know, if that was the case, we'd do a ten-year budget and go home.
Right.
You know, it, it, it really is just a way to plan for the future and at least put some markers on the board of what we can generally expect. Look at the trends.
I guess the broader point I was going to, trying to make is that we hear a lot of talk about housing affordability and household affordability and, and businesses and operating expenses and so on and so forth. The reality is, is that a lot of things that happen at the federal level and a state level have a direct, more of an impact on these items than what we do at the local level. And somehow we always get pegged because, you know, the price of a two-by-four doubled or tripled when we have zero control over that. So more to it than meets the eye. Transformers, right? Thank you, sir.
Yeah, thank you.
Nine A two, presentation of Minnesota gift law by city attorney, Mr. Thompson. Floor is yours, Mr. Thompson.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council. Yeah, I was asked to give a little presentation on the gift law. Just one little historical note, the gift law has now been in place for thirty years. So even the mayor's tenure, he's been elected the entire time the gift law was in place. When the gift law was enacted, there were a lot of council members that had to change their ways. There was a lot of consternation, hand wringing over the law. But everybody's pretty much used to it now. But it, it helps to get a refresher every once in a while on it. So what is the gift law? The gift law is a state statute that says an interested person may not give a gift to a local official and a local official may not accept the gift from an interested person. All right? So two things. One, the gift law does not prevent someone from making a gift to a city. I will, I'll put it another way. It prohibits gifts to city officials, not to cities. All right? And secondly, and it just came up tonight, so it does not govern gifts by elected officials or local officials to other people. All right? That's not what the gift law does. An aside, there are campaign finance practice laws you'll have to deal with, but we don't, we don't regulate them at the city level. That's regulated by the state. So it's only gifts to local officials. Okay. So what's an interested person? An interested person is a person or representative of a person or an association that has a direct financial interest in a decision that a local official is authorized to make. So the gift, that's the first question you always ask is, am I getting something from an interested person? And if it's not an interested person, it doesn't apply to the gift law. Okay? So it's pretty simply put on that.
Grandma's okay.
Excuse me?
Grandma's okay.
Grandma's okay. Maybe the simplest way to think about that is if the person doesn't have anything to do with the city, there's no business in the city, doesn't come to the city for any type of actions or approvals, the gift law does not apply.
However, if grandma's coming for a variance, then, then you would have to recuse yourself from that.
That's true, but that's not a gift law issue. That's a conflict of interest issue.
Right.
So they are different. Okay, who's a local official? A local official does include elected and appointed city officials, but the law does not define appointed city officials. So it clearly applies to high-level employees, which would include the city administrator, department heads, but most likely also could apply to, let's say, a building official who makes decisions and, and other people. But it's not every city employee, although we do urge caution on this. And as a matter of a policy, the city can, you know, regulate gifts to any employee, but it's not technically governed by the gift law. All right, what's a gift? A gift includes money, real or personal property, a service, a loan, forgiveness of a loan, or a promise of future employment without consideration of equal or greater value. So it's all those things. And you're not getting something back for it. So in theory, you could take someone, someone, an interested person could take you to lunch and then next week you buy theirs. It's not recommended because the question is that mutual consideration. So, but it, the point is, it's not just things. It's also a forgiveness of a loan or a promise of future employment. Doesn't come up very much, but that's technically within the definition. Now, there's more exceptions to the gift law than, I keep getting at it, changed by the statute, but there are a lot of exceptions. Okay? So it'd be helpful to go through each one of them. Feel free to interrupt with questions you have as we go along here. But so first of all, campaign contribution is not governed by the gift law. So money that you receive to run your campaign is not governed by the gift law. Secondly, services to, that would assist you in the performance of your duties, such as providing advice, consultation, information and communication in connection with legislation and services to constituents. So help you get from people to do those things are not gifts under the gift law. And then now keep, this says services of insignificant monetary value. And then, now keep, this says services of insignificant monetary value, okay? So sir, it doesn't say things of insignificant, it's services. So if there was, I've never seen this come up in 30 years, okay, but it is an exception to the gift law. And then pla- plaques, trinkets, or mementos costing $5 or less are not governed by the gift law. So if, and I've seen this happen, someone comes up for the council meeting and puts a, some sort of, you know, lapel pin and gives it to all of you and leaves it at the council, theirs, that's not a gift, because it's, it's a trinket or memento that costs less than $5. I'm going to go back to that for a second. So that's not everything that costs less than $5, it's trinkets, mementos, or plaques, okay? It's limited just to those things. You sometimes hear the exception, well, the $5, there's $5 is an exception to the gift law, okay? It only applies to those specific items. Okay, other exceptions, food or beverage that's given at a reception, meal or meeting if the local official is making a speech, or answering questions as part of a program located away from the recipient's place of work. So if you're asked to go speak at a program or answer questions, then they provide a reception or meal, that is not a gift under the gift law. This one comes up, you know, somewhat occasionally, when you're speaking at a, say, a league conference or something like that, where you're making a presentation. Okay, and then gifts given because the recipient is a member of a group, a majority of whose members are not local officials, as long as it's given to all other members. So if you're a member of the, you know, the Lions Club or something like that, and somebody gives something to all the members, including you, that's not a gift, because you're, and I'll get to the conclusion on this, but the, the reason really for that is, it's not being given to you because you're a council member, it's giving, give to you because you're a member of this organization. So it just happens to be that you're a council member. So that's, that's the reason for that exception. Gifts given by grandma? No, not a, not a, not a gift. Okay, food or beverage given at a reception or meal to attendees at a conference, it has to be sponsored by a national or multi-state organization, or government organization, or public officials, and an equivalent gift is given or offered to all of our attendees. So if you go to a National League of City Conference and they give something to everybody, you're okay, doesn't apply to League of Minnesota City Conference, because that's not a national organization, so.
So if they have a breakfast at the League of Minnesota Cities for all of the membership, where does that fall?
Well, presumably you're paying for that.
You're actually paying that through your dues.
Since you're a paying member.
You're paying, yeah. Yeah, good question. You know, when you, when you pay to go to a conference and they give you lunches part, that's not a gift, you're paying for it, you're paying for it, part of the, part of the registration.
Okay.
So that would be covered by that.
So organizations that we as a city are a member to and pay a yearly dues to be a member to that, we're, we're, that's covering, okay?
Yeah, you're paying for that. So that's the, you're giving consideration for what you're getting, so it's not a gift.
Okay.
Another example is as far as like ribbon cuttings, where they have like cookies and stuff out, is that, how is that considered?
If it's giving everybody out, I mean, you gotta see the conclusion at the end, and I know Mr. Reynolds is, this is kind of his line too, so let me save the punchline to the end, and it's going to govern that, okay? All right, okay, so that's it, that's substance. So here's some practical advice. If a person is giving you something and you think they're doing it because you're a council member, the gift is most likely a gift, okay? Just keep that in mind. And, this is Mr. Reynolds' line, just say no. It's, it used to be harder to do that when the gift law first got passed, because it's like you're hurting someone's feelings. Everybody knows about the gift law now, developers, lobbyists, you name it, they all know about it, you know, and some that don't, you know, occasionally they'll ask you to do something or want to do something out of the goodness of their heart, not, not intending to violate anymore. But keep in mind, they're violating the gift law too. This original stat- statute says both the recipient and the donor are violating it. Now, there's really no teeth to that for, for the ones that are giving it, but, but.
Mr. Thompson?
Yeah, just say no is the, kind of the easiest thing. It avoids the appearance of impropriety, and it's, it's just, and nobody gets offended anymore when you do that.
And it's an opportunity frankly, to educate the person on the other side. And, you know, it's simply, hey, listen, I appreciate that, I really do, but, you know, because of my position and what I'm doing, you know, if I'm out in the community and somebody is seeing this interaction and they see you pay for something, that's going to put, you know, some doubt in their minds. So for me, it's like I just simply say no across the board, and then, and then, you know, we're never faced with that situation, and, and people get it.
I was just going to mention that some of the hardest times is when someone's trying to buy you a, constituents trying to buy you a drink at the bar.
Yep.
Yeah.
You just gotta say, you know, sorry, or you just buy them one back, you know, if it gets, something like that.
Again, when things like that come up, and they come up periodically, just contact the city administrator, he'll contact me and we can answer the question.
Mr. Thompson, council member Delaney asked specifically about a ribbon cutting, and if, if, if we go to a ribbon cutting for some business or something, and they're having brats and pop or whatever, for anybody that happens to show up, it's open to the general public. My take is, as long as it's offered to everybody evenly, it's okay.
Right.
Is that correct?
Yeah, that would be, and the answer to, to that is, you're not getting it because you're the mayor. I mean, if, if it was, if it was the, if it was the council member table over here and you could all get food and everybody else didn't, that's different, but that's not what we're talking about.
Okay. And you're not getting anything more than the standard person that's showing up and having a, a dog or whatever.
Correct.
Okay, does that answer your question?
It does, thank you.
But if they try to, if they try to give you something extra special above everybody else, that would be a problem.
Well, two brats, that's a little.
Just ask.
Yes. When in doubt, no and ask. Did we all catch that?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, where does that take us to? Item 10A, city bill list. Thank you, Mr. Thompson. Questions on the city bill list?
None for me.
Mr. Delaney? 10B, liaison administration reports. Which side did we start with last time?
I'll start, because I do not have any updates.
All right.
I was at the Chamber and Visitors Bureau monthly meeting and gave a report, right after that, came down to City Hall for Angie Craig handing us a big check. So that was a, a good day.
And I know Councilor Whiting is our liaison for MBTA, and he was working with a resident that had some questions. Appreciate you doing that, I forwarded that to you since you're our liaison. Mr. Delaney?
Okay, let's go down my list here. As far as SBU, commission report, installation of advanced metering infrastructure, AMI water and electrical meters has kicked off. I got mine installed, it's painless, two-hour block increments, it didn't take the entire two hours, it was in and out in 30 minutes. It got installed, also my electrical got installed, so just be aware that that's coming.
They're doing both water and, and electric?
Water and electric, yeah.
Okay.
There was a, the joint inspection agreement did pass at Spuck, but also passed through tonight. I think it's fantastic, it's, I love to see the city and Spuck working together, and this is more efficiency and direction of goodness. As far as 169 Coalition, we had our Zoom meeting, we went over the prior, prioritization questionnaire, and we covered the agenda for the upcoming full meeting, which is happening tomorrow at By the Yard. I think the questionnaire did show up at the city today, or this last couple of days, I think the mayor got it, hoping our city administrator got it, engineering got it, so we'll have some discussions offline about that. Of course, more about the Coalition. Coalition's been around for about 14 years, they do great strides to improve safety and mobility, efficiency along US 169 corridor, from Encado to the Twin Cities, but actually more than that. And many Coalition's priorities have, have been completed as far as some of the work along 169, so this is basically to get another set of objectives to go forward. Let's see, as far as other community outreach, we did do cleanup day, was that?
Cleanup day.
Yep, sir, that was actually fun. I always enjoy talking to the residents, got a chance to visit Public Works, Fire Department, Police Department. The Public Works, the piece I remember about that is technology and GPS. I thought that was fantastic use of technology, also cost savings. And also want to put a thank you out to Pastor Art Hanson, it was a true blessing attending their National Day of Prayer service at Friendship Church last Thursday. They prayed for the church, the family, education, business, workplace, military, government, arts and entertainment media, so that was a good time, an opportunity to talk to residents. That's it.
All right, the, do we want to discuss the 169 thing now, or just under other business? I, I sent forward to both the Coalition and staff a couple of things that I had on the 169. One, as the council knows, we're, we're working on the stretch from the bridge through Shakpe, which has a very high call load. Safety issues kind of goes into the 169 corridors, mission statement of reducing safety, areas of safety concern on, on the corridor. I don't know what the fix is, certainly going to have to be through MINDOT. Second thing I, I put forward was, you know, river crossing capacity has always been an issue. There's been studies on multi-model studies up to 55, I think it was. And it talked a lot about the Bus Rapid Transit on the shoulder with the added inside lane, high occupancy vehicle at peaks, and then open off peaks for use. And we know that the amphitheater's going to open at some point, and we're going to have that traffic coming in, and along with all the other great entertainment things that we have, they come in through one, one venue, 169 pretty much, I, you know, it's the river's kind of a barrier, it's a blessing, and at some points it's a hindrance too, so.
That's true.
It's been on a docket for a long time, I know it's a very expensive thing, although it, when it was built, the crossing that river, they built specifically what that capacity would be added at a later date, so they were thinking ahead. Hopefully their thought process, thinking ahead back in the late 90s when they built that bridge doesn't go in vain and nothing ever happens. So just, that were my comments. Any comments from council on 169?
I think the other capacity was for the train lane or a train in the middle.
Well, our studies have always had the Bus Rapid Transit piece in it.
The bridge and the extra buttments, I thought was for a train, but.
Because the, there's one lane on each direction on the inside, and, I mean, we really don't have the need for such a fixed train.
I thought that's what it was designed for.
Where's it going to go? And who's it going to serve, right?
Well, true, true, I just thought that's what it was designed for.
Bus, Bus Rapid Transit and the past studies on that same study that's been dusted off a few times, the benefit of that out here is that if there's any changes in the model of commuters, whether it's job changes or growth or whatever, it's really easy to just change the route of a bus. You don't have to change infrastructure, you don't have to change all these other things, where you can just make them changes with MTV, MBTA, and you're moving it forward pretty rapidly without a substantial cost, so, and there's much more flexibility. All right, item number, my report, I'm sorry. April 25th, hosted Congresswoman Angie Craig, dollars for the innovation hub, as Councilor Whiting pointed out, million bucks, thank her for that. One more piece toward the, getting the puzzle connected. April 26th, ribbon cutting at quality equipment, couldn't help it, my past, I had to play with some of that equipment out there, it was pretty cool. Very nice building, pretty good size, I was really surprised at the different kinds of equipment that they had out there, and all the technology that they're putting into the zero-turn mowers, I can't remember which company had them out there, but I talked with him quite a bit, it was pretty, pretty fascinating actually. April 30th, met with our fire leadership, in-house meeting, and ongoing legislative updates and stuff, I mean, there's a lot going on right now at the state level. You know, we put in our two cents multiple times, and we'll see where the chips fall when they fall, but I think the parking is still in there, no limitation or, nor, no requirement for parking. What was the other, there's a couple other things come, that could be coming down a pike, we'll see where it goes. Dollars from the state coming to cities for infrastructure, where we might be required to have up to three years, and dollars locally for the rebuilding of whatever the initial state piece went into, that could be a huge deterrent for regional and statewide improvements that serve the larger area. Told them that, they're not listening, but we'll see, we'll see if some of this stuff gets passed. I don't know if Mr. Reynolds has, wants to add anything on the legislative update, that's my report, and I'll turn it over to Mr. Reynolds.
Yeah, the only thing I would add, Mr. Mayor, is that I believe it was either Friday afternoon or this morning, I'm trying to remember, but they did insert language in regards to having requirements for garages, certain types of materials on the facade of homes. So things that we thought had been carved out are now, one by one, or seem to be, which we knew what was going to happen. I mean, everything up until the last week is just kind of playing around, and then this is where, where things.
Rubber meets the road.
Rubber meets the road, and things get inserted at the last minute, and the next thing you know, they're passed, and then we're stuck with the consequences.
One of the things that I got a, got wind of yesterday from Representative Bakberg was they, they passed the ability of cities to have their public meeting information, public hearings, whatnot, on, on the official city site, websites, because we don't have a newspaper locally here. The problem I see with the legislation that they passed is it says we may do that if we so choose to. And it really should have said must, because you, they're taking away basically by allowing the may to not have a requirement for a public hearing notification. And, you know, that was one thing that, that we didn't like about the housing bill, because it took away the ability for cities to hear from the residents on proposals written next door. And this is just a roundabout way of doing the exact same thing. Hopefully we opt to put our stuff either in a paper, whether it's the Star Tribune or on our website, so that we are informing our residents. But I, I thought it was disingenuous, workaround to say may instead of must. Should be, should really have to do one or the other. You should either have to post it in the paper, or.
I read it that way, you, you could read it that way too.
It says may, it says you may put it on the website, if there's no local paperability in your political area.
But does another law say that you would have to put it in the papers, and then too, they didn't take away the other one about reporting it?
Yeah, they changed it because it says if you don't have a newspaper available in your political subdivision, you may put it on your website, doesn't say you must.
And I'll, and I'll check on that, I wasn't aware that that had actually passed anywhere. I'll, I'll, I'll find, I'll find out and get that to you tomorrow.
Yep, and, and, and if it did, we just need to be transparent with our, our folks and make sure that when there's a public hearing, that we're letting them know that it's happening, so that they can exercise their, redress the government that they're afforded in the Constitution. Can't do that if you don't know about it. All right, anything else?
Nope.
Item number 12, Mr. Whiting.
I'll make a motion to go into closed session to discuss labor negotiations according to Minnesota Statute 13D.03, subdivision B.
Second.
Second.
A discussion on the motion?
None.
All in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion passes, we are going to go into closed session to discuss labor negotiations according to Minnesota State Statute. Okay, we reconvene the Shakpe City Council meeting, coming out of closed session to discuss labor negotiations with no actions being taken. Next thing on the agenda would be item number 13, Mr. Lara?
Yes, I'd like to make a motion to adjourn to Tuesday, May 21st, 2024, at 7:00 PM.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion on the motion? Discussion, seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes, we are adjourned. Thank you.